Good evening, everyone. Just a quick announcement before we begin tonight's meeting. First off, thank you for everyone for making time tonight with these treacherous conditions to come out here and spend time with us and help us govern. Just a quick announcement for anybody at home here today. We're not having a, we're not calling a snow emergency today. We've been trying to keep up on the snow. As you know, many neighborhoods still have piles of leaves on the side of their, in the, in the curbs. And so it poses a little bit of an issue to get all the cars off the street and plow it. We do have a plan where we're going to hit all the main streets, all the main arteries. We are going to do some plowing in residential streets, but we're going to kind of stay away from those leaves because we do have a thaw coming ahead of us and we'd like to pick those up. And so it's not that our crews aren't out there, but when you declare a snow emergency, it requires a lot more plowing and some other things that may interfere with leaf pickup here in the next few days. So just want to make everyone aware. With that, I'm going to call to order the November 11th, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with a invocation given by Commissioner Lavasser, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
One hundred and one years ago today, on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, the fighting of World War I ended. It is out of this momentous moment in our history that we now mark this day, November 11th, as the day we honor and thank the members of our armed forces who sacrificed much to protect and preserve our nation and the ideals of democracy we hold dear. We honor these veterans, these heroes, who in modesty would never think of themselves in such a manner, but heroes they are. Let us not take for granted their service. Let us always recognize and appreciate their commitment to our nation. And let us not limit ourselves to November 11th to thank them for their courage. Let every day be days we appreciate the men and women of our armed forces in our hearts, in our minds, in our words, and in our actions. Let us honor and thank them every day. Let every day be Veterans' Day.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cammer, I think I saw you here this evening. I assume you are here to accept the proclamation. I typically have this proclamation with me, but I think for today I might have to read it from my screen.
Oh, that's all right.
Sean Cammer from our DDA is here. As many of you know, it's been a tradition to designate a day in November for Small Business Saturday. And we're going to read our, I'm going to read a proclamation here on behalf of the city commission. This proclamation is designating November 30th, 2019, a Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Royal Oak, Michigan celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63 percent of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And we're a small business employees, over 49 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. Whereas 89 percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. Whereas 87 percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. Whereas 93 percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas the city of Royal Oak, Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fornie, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2019, a Small Business Saturday in the city of Royal Oak, Michigan, and urge our residents and residents from other communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Sean, I'll come down there and... I apologize, I don't have the physical proclamation to provide.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation honoring Small Business Saturday. I'm joined here by a representative of the small business community in downtown Royal Oak, Mr. Brian Lane of Bingo Pet Salon. He's the owner. I just want to say, since I've been with the Downtown Development Authority, the city of Royal Oak, we've had a regular part of our budget, something set aside for Small Business Saturday. And that's to make sure that we promote all the small businesses that lend so much to the character and reputation of downtown Royal Oak. This year, we're planning a lot of exciting things. The first thing is, is we'll be communicating a lot of our special promotions from our small businesses with mailers to our neighborhoods. We will be providing custom Royal Oak shopping bags to the participating retailers and restaurants. We will be working with a public relations firm to have a segment on Fox Two, November 29th, at 8:30 a.m., promoting a lot of our small businesses and the merchandise that they have. And we will also be working with Oakland County with their Shop Text Win Contest. I should note, last year, someone from Royal Oak won $5,000 in this contest by buying a coffee in downtown. So I'd like to briefly turn it over to Mr. Lane for just a moment, who wants to just communicate a few things on behalf of the small business community. Mr. Lane, welcome.
Thank you. The Small Businesses Downtown Royal Oak, I'm sure as you guys are aware, we had a Pink Out Royal Oak event this last month. We had over 50 businesses participate and partnership between Bingo Pet Salon and the Royal Oak Restaurant Association and a ton of retailers, we raised over $9,000 for the American Cancer Society. So we just wanted to kind of let you guys know that we did that.
Remember, anyone can go online and buy a gift for an apparent loved one, but if you really love somebody, come to downtown Royal Oak. Pick out a unique gift that expresses how much you love them and spend the day at great restaurants like Luigi's and many others that, you know, can create such a great experience. So we're so lucky to have great business owners like yourself, Mr. Lane, and offering such a unique variety of, especially coming up to the holidays. There's a lot of great things here in our city. So I encourage you to come downtown, have some fun, and enjoy the time. All right. This brings us to public comment, item number five on the agenda tonight. Just a few rules before we start public comment. The city values and relies on the input of fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that when you come up to the podium, you address your comments to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the approval of the amendment of the Plan of Operation of Traditoria Pizzeria Luigi, you may want to wait until that public hearing is open and you can comment at that time. We ask that those comments be only about that specific public hearing. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment or at the public hearing, please wait till recognized by me, the mayor. Once recognized, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please be mindful that we wish to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes, and we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Email us, contact us via other mediums, and your comments will be received. Please note, the city commission won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address those agenda, or those questions when the agenda topic is discussed. And if your public comment doesn't have anything to do with anything on the agenda tonight, it's all right. Our city manager's also taking notes and we address those issues with the appropriate department. With that, who's first? Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Hammond. I'm the Vice President of Fairways Condominiums Board of Directors, 3145 Benjamin Avenue. And I have some passouts I'd like to have distributed, so if you could take those. Appreciate that. Just want to talk tonight about, we see that the decision for installation of the golf netting on Royal Oak Golf Course is on the agenda tonight. I want to thank you for taking that into consideration and bringing it to the table. The issue of public safety for us is utmost importance. Postal workers, police and fire department personnel, EMS personnel, public works personnel, contractors, visitors, and residents of the fairways deserve protection golf netting will provide. Okay? The, I understand the total number of golf ball impacts on our property was quoted at 21. That was from your Parks and Recreation Department. And that information was provided to the Parks and Recreation Department as of July 11th. At the end of the year, we have a totally different, in addition, many more golf balls have impacted our property. And the impacts are as such, impacts on C building, and this is just trim and against the building that we've been able to identify, 34 hits total for the season, broken screens in C building, C, there's 10 total, landing in the pool area, we had nine balls land in the pool area, broken windows in C building, we had three that we recorded, landing on the C building roof, two, landing on the A garage roof, two. We've had one windshield broken. We've had two near misses of golf balls hitting personnel on the property, and we had one individual actually get hit by a golf ball. The golf course lost a large willow tree along the east side of the fairways on hole number five that used to deflect any errant drives off of that number five tee. And with that tree gone, any errant drive off of that tee going to the left is a direct shot into C building. And we have reasonable belief that that is the cause of a couple of different broken windows and such. There are a handful of people at fairways who struggle with the understanding of the safety consequences the ball strikes. However, there's nine out of 10 residents at fairways understands it, and we seriously want that golf net installed for safety purposes. We urge you to approve that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Yes, ma'am?
Gaye Montgomery, President of Fairways Condominium Association. And I don't have a lot to add to what Jim said, but I did want to, to just say that we, once I posted that there was going to be the golf course netting issue come up tonight, there was a resident in the other building, 3415 is A building and 3439 is C building. So when Jim was referring to C building, it was the one that's on the north, the bigger one being the one that's, that's towards 13 Mile. She was very concerned that they weren't represented, that A building had not been represented in the survey that went around. And there, so she put this up in the mailroom. And out of respect to what she had done and her concern, I felt I would bring it tonight. And she put it up Saturday night, that's when she heard about this, put it up Saturday night, no mail Sunday, no mail Monday, so a lot of people were not going into the mailroom. But I still wanted to bring it. And the difference between this survey and the other survey is that people independently signed with nobody watching, whereas the survey that went around to 3439, the person that was circulating it was right in front of the people as they were signing. So we will just, I'm just going to pass this over and you'll have it for your records. Thank you.
Very good of you, Mrs. Montgomery. Thank you.
I only have one copy.
Oh, that's okay. All right, who wishes to speak next?
Do you want to pass it down? Can we pass it down to the press?
Yes, sir, right here in the front.
Jeremy Lipton, 217 Jeffrey. This is a bit of an impromptu, so I apologize, I didn't do all my homework, but pertaining to traffic on Main, particularly between Normandy and 13, it's been a year and it routinely, like every weekday, backs up for that entire, well, to the point that we can't get out of our street. Since the bike lanes have been installed and the speed limits were changed, I was wondering if anything has been looked at pertaining to traffic optimization? Light, traffic light timing, speed limits, I understand the bike lanes are important, but is, if there's anything else that could be done to optimize traffic flow, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Lipton. And just to let you know, we are evaluating the speed limit as well as, we had to wait till the fall to do some traffic studies because that's when traffic is most with kids going to school and everything. So we're going to internalize that and decide what modifications need to be had. And also too, I mean frankly speaking, I-75 under construction has flooded everywhere, so it's kind of a crazy loop right now, so...
Absolutely, I totally get it, but I, I think the traffic light timing is, is a low-hanging fruit, so.
Yep. We want to make sure we do it right. So we're getting the, the numbers now and, you know, we're, we'll work faster than most governments, but, you know, still we want to make sure we make the right decision.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lipton. Mr. Curtis.
I'll be very brief. My name's Paul Curtis. I live at 226 West Bloomfield. I did want to say, I don't think any of my golf balls were off a tee five, but it's entirely possible that I could, so if you really should, get that netting. My friend Luigi's here, I'm voting for him for a little extended hours, that'd be great, but I really wanted to speak to, I was looking at the length of meetings, and I'm pretty sure all the commissioners are aware of the length of meetings, but I noticed, you know, four hours and 14, four hours and 45. I'm looking at the YouTube that's showing the three hours and 45 minutes. And I was wondering if the commission had considered moving public comment towards the back end of meetings. I know there's several students here by, teachers are assigning that they should come out from their civics class, but if we had one of those marathon meetings, these poor students would be here past the 11 o'clock hour, and, and they got to go to school in the morning. And we have to go to work in the morning. And if there are things on these agendas that are really important to us, that we want to be a part of as citizens, as residents, it just seems a real shame that the public comment should go on so long. Not that I want to cut short anybody's chance to have public comment, but if it were moved to the end, the rest of us wouldn't have to suffer through such a long, long public comment. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. All right, who's next? Mr. Ashley.
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor, president of. I just have one question. I noticed on the Axiom network that you had, you had no pricing for installation of it in the cars on there, so there is no cost. I was wondering if somebody could let me know how much it is going to cost, how long it's going to take, and are you removing everything from the current cars and putting it in a brand-new system? How much training is involved? Because that's all part of the installation cost. So I noticed it wasn't on there. Could somebody please email me that cost so I can have it? Thank you.
We'll get that question answered tonight when the topic comes up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. Yes, sir.
Eric Schaefer, 723 East 11 Mile. Just thought I'd take a minute to reinforce to the commission the debt situation in this Taking a long look at it, and I would hope that you all, sorry about that, hope you all have your financial report, which I flashed last meeting. We are now $231 million in debt, based on data from nearly a year ago. So the trend that I've picked up is, it's clearly getting a lot worse. And you seem to take no note of the debt level of this city. We were, of course you can't read this, but I've got copies for you, highlighted. And what this shows, you see some circles, I know you can't read it. This city was $80 million in debt 10 years ago. Two years ago, we had improved our position to $48 million of debt. In the most recent two years, this administration, by this number on the far right, on the city's own documents, shows the debt level of this city is $231 million. Now somehow, with all the stuff you're working on, things like, you know, our animal shelter, I see nobody managed to shovel the snow so the people could come in here. I mean, I can't believe it. We're $231 million in debt and we can't figure out how to shovel the snow in front of the city hall. But you sure can't figure out how to borrow the money to build a new city hall, but you can't seem to figure out how to shovel the snow for these very important meetings. So I, I've just made my mind up, I'm not going to let you forget about what you've Page 163 of the City of Royal Oak financial report summarized right here, $231 million of debt, and it's getting worse.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Anybody else here wish to speak tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close public meeting, bring it back up to here. Just a quick comment, I've heard at public comment a couple times about the debt question. I think it's important to look at the retirement obligations that are now part of that number you're seeing that were always debt that the city carried, but we refinance them at a lower interest rate to save about $2 million in cash a year, formally under GASB, which is how we report. FASB is for, you know, publicly traded companies, GASB is what governments report. No city had to report what their obligations were to retirees. So we shifted this debt that we owed to all these thousands of, or hundreds of retirees, and we moved it by bonding it through a county program that Brooks Patterson put in, and it was able, so now it shows up on the books, but it's debt before, it's debt now, except for we're saving a heckle of a lot more money in the position that we're at today. So I hope that helps some people understand why they see that number on 163. Historically, it wasn't recorded other than our retirement statements that we had, so... All right. Let's talk about item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perush.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, seconded by Commissioner Dubach. Is there discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. This brings us down to the consent agenda. I'm aware of one item that a commissioner wants to pull off for discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to pull item D from the agenda for discussion.
Item D for discussion. Anybody else wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for discussion? All right. So the consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes from October 28th, claims November 5th and November 8th, approval of purchase orders, contract modification to contract cap 1915, asphalt resurfacing improvements, Normandy Road, approval of the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution Annual Permit, approval of Commission of the Arts Artist Laureate Agreement, Planning Commission Recommendation, Conditional Rezoning of the Northeast Corner of Knoll Street and East Harrison Avenue, second reading, and receive and file non-action items, which is the October 2019 investment report. Is there a motion? It's a motion by Commissioner Dubach. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to item D, formerly on the consent agenda, which is the approval of special event permit Royal Oak jingle, December 14 and 15, 2019. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, to be clear, I completely support this motion. I'm delighted that the, our DDA is moving forward. Over the past couple of years, they've been looking for a formula that works for us for downtown for the holidays. I'm, and I'm happy with the, the new location. I love the idea of the nighttime parade. And I only bring this up because in addition to the DDA's event, the city every year has a tree lighting and sing-along next to the farmer's market, and there's a, a holiday market in the, in the building. And A, we no longer have a tree to light, and B, I mean, many families attend that. I mean, it's, it's well attended, the market does well, and I'm just raising this only to ask staff to perhaps find a way to maximize the effect of both of these events, find a way to combine them. I anticipate that once our downtown park is done, that's going to be the natural place to consolidate all of this. And I'm just, just asking that, you know, the city staff, the appropriate departments start taking a look at this and figure out how to combine these events to really maximize Royal Oak as a, as a holiday destination at a, at a clear period of time. I'm not sure when the, the farmer's market event is. It's typically in November, DDA is in December. Just would like to see a little bit more coordination here.
Fair comment. Any other questions or comments on item D? I just think it's great. I mean, we talk about all the downtown retailers we have, restaurants. I mean, the holiday season is when people come together, get together, think of others, spend money. You know, this is great to have, you know, Royal Oak start to become an epicenter, and I think every event matters, but your point's well taken. I mean, especially sometimes I think there's confusion too, but, you know, we can, I mean, my family is, is always at both, so. We love the hot dogs and hot cocoa. What can you say? For a dad on the run, it's a great dinner. Easy.
So with that, I'll move approval of the agenda item.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. All right, with none. I'll call, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Perush.
Judy Davis is here, and I hate to put you on the spot, but do you know the date of the farmer's market event off the top of your head?
I do not. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a good bet. Judy usually knows everything.
I know, she usually does.
Would I forget my PIN number for the ATM? I'm like, Judy.
It's been a busy couple of days, so I understand. We're shifting it a focus here.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Commissioner Macy?
I was going to say, so I think the Children's Choir is singing at the farmer's market, and according to my calendar, that's November 22nd.
Okay.
Uh-huh. 22nd.
That's what I have.
It's the holiday market, though.
Okay. Oh, that could be. That could be.
Okay, thank you.
And then what I'm seeing on the website is that Santa arrives on Thursday, December 5th, so I'm guessing that's...
That's right, that's it. So it's Santa arrives at December 5th on the post office, and then the farmer's market is, that's the tree lighting night, or the tree lighting night.
Yep. Thursday, December 5th, 4:00 to 9:00 over at the farmer's market.
Okay, thank you.
Santa knows best. I'm going to go with his date.
Yes, I think so. Okay, thank you.
You don't want to add anything? Chief? Okay. Any Christmas stories from long ago? No? Okay. All right. This brings us to item eight on our agenda, the Michigan Liquor Control License Establishment, Traditoria Pizzeria Luigi, 415 South Washington, request to amend Plan of Operation. Chief.
Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from Three Sons Incorporated to change their Plan of Operation. Specifically, they're looking to stay open later. They want to be able to stay open until 2:00 a.m. They were approved under the bistro ordinance, and they're looking to kind of change that. The operator, Luigi, is a longtime business owner, current Italian-American Man of the Year, and has a very well-run establishment, and we have no, no opposition to this change.
Any questions for the chief?
This is similar to the change, we had a recent change to a bistro for Cafe Muse, correct?
Correct.
And these change, the bistro licenses, they're non, they can't be sold within the city, they're, they belong to that property.
Correct.
Yes. If the business were to change hands, it would have to remain operating under the same, a Plan of Operation, correct? Even if it changed?
If the business cha, yes, but any minor change, would it be a Plan of Operation change that would require city commission approval?
Exactly. So we're approving this particular change for this particular business model with this particular operator at this particular location?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Luigi?
Good evening. Happy Veterans' Day. No, I don't, I'm not planning on selling it.
No, I don't, I'm not planning on selling it. The reason I, I'm changing for this change of operation, perhaps started the twentieth of the November, we started to have opera night for, you know, in conjunction with the Michigan, you know, some of the people who play at Detroit Tap House, is the Michigan Opera. And most likely, we will be done around twelve o'clock, but there's a chance we might want to open until twelve-ten. It would be in violation. Okay? And a fry, we, we don't unfortunately, the way our establishment is, we, we don't do no pop crawl. We don't do none of them, you know, we're just a true seventy-thirty restaurant. Seventy percent food, thirty percent liquor. And we can, we might want to do some jazz. We might want to do a little band. We, most likely, we would be closed by, before twelve. But again, if we want to stay open until twelve-thirty, we'd be in violation. So, and that's why I'm, I'm asking to do this change. I don't want to say, I've been in Royal Oak thirty-five years. I'm not planning on going nowhere.
Questions for Luigi? I have a question, Luigi.
Yeah.
I did receive a few complaints about some, at least one unsavory pizza cook one night that you had at your restaurant.
Yeah, I know this. Can I mention that? You guys probably... No, but Mayor Fournier is probably one of the best pizza thrower I ever had. I mean, this man, Ovi, can throw pizza five feet in the air. You know, and I was going to hire him, but he don't want to work for sixty dollars an hour.
I said, if the mayor thing doesn't work out, I'll be there twice a month.
Don't give up your day job.
Well, I could be a comedian. No, I'm kidding. Jokes. That's the best joke.
Pizza mend, though.
That's right. I could.
You should, no, no, you shouldn't. You could.
Now, you got a great establishment there, Luigi. Totally understand what you're trying to do, and it makes total sense, and you've been an awesome operator in this community for such a long time. A real example of how to be a business steward in the community, and we're just so grateful you're here, operating such a fantastic business. That's a point of pride for our city.
Thank you, very kind of you.
Commissioner Dubac?
I have to remove for approval.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Dubac? Oh, yeah, we need a public hearing. I'm sorry, Luigi, you know what? You're causing so many problems for me, I gotta open up a public hearing. Okay, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Same rules apply as public comment. Anyone wish to speak at tonight's public hearing? All right. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring the meeting back up to the side of the table. Commissioner Dubac?
I will move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy with the fast hand. Any discussion? All right, Commissioner Dubac.
I think you said it well, Mayor. Luigi's, you know, runs a, a model establishment and is an anchor of the community, and, you know, happy to give you the flexibility you need to continue to have success on, on Washington there.
All right. No other discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, Luigi. I mean, it's way past my bedtime, twelve, but, you know.
Maybe I'll see if I get up early one day.
All right, this brings us to item nine, which is the Royal Oak Golf Course netting. Mr. Fidelli?
The Honorable Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission, in July of two thousand and eighteen, the Director of Recreation and Public Service, Greg Rassell, received correspondence from the Board of Directors of the Fairways Condominium Association, asking the city to install netting on holes number four and number five at the Royal Oak Golf Course, which are north and west of three-four-three-nine Benjamin Avenue. The City Commission discussed this request at its regular meeting on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and unanimously approved a motion directing staff to request proposals for the installation of the netting. In February of two thousand and nineteen, the city's clerk's office received correspondence from the residents of three-four-three-nine Benjamin, stating that a majority of those residents were opposed to the installation of any netting. Staff also consulted with the operations of the golf course, who felt that the golf balls bouncing through the chain link fence along the edge of the course were more of a problem than balls flying over the fence. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, City Commission meeting, staff presented the three proposals that had been received for the installation of the twenty-seven-foot-high netting along hole four and hole five. Staff's recommendation at this time was to install wind screens within the chain link fence and monitor the situation during the upcoming golf season. After further discussion, the City Commission unanimously adopted a motion accepting staff's recommendation and directing the Parks Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board to have further discussion with the condominium association. At its regular meeting on September fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Parks Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board discussed the issue of the netting. They eventually made a motion to recommend to the City Commission that the city have the netting installed adjacent to three-four-three-nine Benjamin Avenue. Staff does not support this recommendation. Approximately sixteen thousand rounds of golf were played at the Royal Golf Course this year, and with installation of the winds, wind screens and chain link fence, to staff's knowledge, only twenty-one balls had hit the three-four-three-nine Benjamin Building. Two windows were broken on the fourth floor of the building, but those would have been broken even if netting had been in place. If the City Commission agrees with staff, no further action is needed to be taken at this time. On the other hand, if the City Commission accepts the recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board, the following resolution would be appropriate.
That's the resolution right here, that the City Commission hereby directs staff to reissue a request for proposals for netting on hole four and five?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Questions for Mr. Fidelli? Commissioner Vasar?
The numbers that you have, twenty-one balls hitting the building versus what was presented to us tonight, which seemed to be in excess of thirty, thirty-four. I'm just wondering if, if you're, if you know what the discrepancy would be or why there's a difference in the numbers.
So the numbers that were received that said twenty-one, that was presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on September fifth. So there could have, there's obviously more rounds of golf that were played. So, you know, the idea of more balls being hit over that, from that time span, probably could have happened, so you're looking at probably a total of about fifty-some odd golf balls hitting the building.
This was after the, the materials put, was put in the chain link fence to break the wind and to slow down balls. So there was still twenty-one getting through at that point?
Correct.
And any sense of how high they are, what velocity they're traveling, anything of that nature?
The golf balls?
Yes.
So we had some netting experts go out there, as well as our Royal Oak Golf Center employees. As it pertains to hole number four, in his, in the expert's personal opinion, the shots going over the fence would be from close shots with a wedge slash shorter iron that are bladed. So lower height versus missed clubbing and hitting two. So it almost sounds like, from his opinion, people are using the wrong club.
It's very forensic.
We're not talking about drives off a tee, we're talking about...
In the fairway, approach in the green.
For me, third shot.
Commissioner Macy?
I just want to clarify a little bit. I mean, this, this memo reads almost, I mean, this is a great history of how, what has happened throughout here, but it becomes a little short after the part where it was referred back to Parks and Rec and Senior Service Advisory Board, which, yes, it was our regular meeting, but it was a regular meeting that was attended by thirty or forty people from Fairways condos, who spoke both pro and con on the, on the netting situation. The Parks and Rec Board took it under advisement. We went back and looked at the, we took a, a month off to go, each individually, go look at the netting situation, come back with our own thoughts and recommendations. And then we made this unanimous decision that we should recommend that the City Commission move on the, on the netting. So while I understand that staff has not, has never supported this recommendation, I do take a little bit of issue with the way this is written, because we have a citizen resident board that is tasked with looking at these issues and, and making their recommendations to the city. We've heard already what the staff had to say. That's what the staff brought with their initial recommendation, which the City Commission looked, take, took a look at carefully, looked at several times, and then sent down to our board to, for further advisement, and that's what the board's advised. It was unanimous, although, of course, we had reservations as well. And I think the issue that is kind of breaking down between the, between the staff and the board was that the staff is seeing that the chances of someone getting hit with the ball are miniscule, very, very small, which I think everyone on the board acknowledges. But the board is concerned primarily with safety. And in that minuscule chance that someone is hit, they could be hurt very badly. And given those two things, and the price tag that we were told, which was around thirty thousand dollars, it seemed to us like a very obvious decision. So that's just my filling out a little bit of the history.
Any other questions? I'll go Commissioner Perusch, then Commissioner Dubac.
We had some of the numbers a, a long time ago, I think, in terms of either estimates of how much the netting would cost, or perhaps they were the original numbers that came back. Does that thirty thousand dollars figure include the netting on, on both sides of the fence that are, that it's being, because my recollection, maybe from the description, is that it's, it's going to go not only parallel to the building, but also along the side of the building? Is netting going to be on both of those sides?
John answered that, but mine just is.
Thirty, it was thirty-three thousand dollars just for the netting on thirty-four, thirty-nine Benjamin. If you were to place the netting, or additional netting on the other building that butts up towards the swimming pool, you're probably looking at another twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. So, but is the recommendation from the Parks Board just for the, the one, or is it for both?
So my, it's a good question. My memory is that it's just for the thirty-four, thirty-nine, and that part of the argument against approving that was that if we did that, we would have to basically do everything, because then people on the other side would also say, why aren't we doing this other netting? So that was, it was part of the, like, domino effect argument, and not, I think, the initial request.
Okay, but the, but the Parks Board just approved the, the thirty thousand dollars for the one side?
I want to say yes. Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. I just wanted to be clear about that part.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubac?
I think that's been covered.
Okay. Discussions, motions. Commissioner Macy?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Macy, supported by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion. Let's go with Commissioner Vasar, then Commissioner Douglas.
Even if we go with the numbers that were presented to us in staff's motion, twenty-one balls getting through even after the wind screens up in the chain link, that seems like an incredible amount of balls getting through. And they have to be coming through with some significant velocity if we're getting two broken windows on the fourth floor of the building, if we're getting a broken wind, windshields at the property. I see it as a public safety issue. I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, we've had a, I mean, a change since we've started looking at this in that the willow tree has come down. And as a left-handed golfer, I know that willow tree, I have an intimate relationship with that former willow tree.
Are you the reason it came down? Matt, any fault to it?
I, my little seal. But at any rate, I think that kind of changes the game in, and certainly tips the balance in favor of the screening along that west border.
Commissioner Dubac?
I really appreciate Commissioner Macy's kind of summary of the work that was done on Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board, and this some we've been kicking around for a long time. And there's clearly two camps in, in the community that's impacted by this. So no matter what we do, someone's going to be unhappy. And so all things being equal, someone's going to be unhappy one way or the other. I think erring on the side of caution, on the side of public safety, is really our charge here. And as Commissioner Douglas pointed out, the situation has evolved to make that even a greater concern. So this seems like the proper decision for us to make sure that there, however small the chance, I mean, there are precautions that we take as a city for much smaller risk factors.
Right.
And this is a very real thing that's happening. And so over a number of years, someone would eventually get hit if we don't take action, and that would be on us. So I'm happy to support the motion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just echo what everyone else said. I think in this particular case, you know, there might be some disagreement at the condo board. However, doing the most conservative thing here with public safety is the right thing to do. Whenever you have disagreement, it might not be a whole and one, but, you know, in this particular case, I think we can always take down the nets if we need to. If it's a real issue, I don't see it being, and, and the fact that the willow tree came down, I think is another major change. And so we also are putting cart paths in, and all of this on the course, which, you know, can even magnify in certain bowls as well. So, yeah, I think it's the right thing to do, and I appreciate staff. I appreciate your opinion. I know you're playing it by the numbers. We got lots of competing needs in the city for investments in park and recreation. But we got, you know, dozens of people that live in that area that are going in and out every day, you know, from their cars and their homes, and, you know, it's going to cost, you know, I don't, I don't want to put a value on anyone's life, but if someone gets hit by a golf ball the wrong way, you know, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars is trivial, you know? And if we can make a change, we should. So I'll be supporting the motion. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I neglected to mention that tree sometimes made me weep.
No. Oh, man, way to go out on a limb.
Keep this up, I'm going to leave.
Don't stray too far from the nest. Yeah, so, so, so everyone knows the next steps on this one. It's going to be brought to our budget, you know, in the two-twenty, the next fiscal year budget. So we'll have some ideas of what it costs and all that, and we'll adopt it into our budget. So you can decide to do something, but you also need the funding to do something. So it'll get in our next cycle, but based on the weather today, I'm sure it's not going to be an immediate need until next year anyhow, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thanks for weathering the storm. All right, this brings us to item number ten, approval of purchase of Axon Network. Chief O'Donohue?
Mayor City Commission, at the May twenty-third budget work session, I gave a presentation on the Axon Network. As I mentioned, it's a family of equipment and software that includes the in-car cameras, the officer body worn cameras, next-generation tasers, interview room recording equipment, and a cloud-based digital evidence storage and management system. As I explained, this is more of a subscription rather than a standard purchase. Part of this five-year plan is, we, the body cams get replaced twice over the five years, and our in-car cameras get replaced once. We're ready to move forward. The total cost is, it is expensive over five years. It's one million dollars, three, thirty-four thousand and one hundred and eleven dollars over the five years. The first year costs two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, and then years two through five will be a hundred-and-ninety-two, seven-ninety-six. The aforementioned price includes some equipment discount, trade-in discounts, and a sizable discount for migrating our existing hard drive of in-car videos into the Axon Network, which is something we need to do very quickly, because that hard drive is literally being held together by duct tape and tinfoil. We've had numerous problems with it. It's, it's really at the end of life. It was mentioned, the question about vehicle installation, we're not opting to have Axon installed. They, they have a very expensive installation, so Synergy will do it for substantially cheaper. It's five hundred dollars per vehicle, and we have twenty-three vehicles. And there's a resolution for approval.
Chief, we had a question at public comment, and I think you answered it, but I just want to call it out. When we talk about the cost to install it into the car, this is all part of the subscription cost, so they'll give us a one-time over the, the period to swap out the equipment and put the new equipment in the car. Is that how that works?
The equipment installation is separate, and it's five hundred dollars per car, and we have twenty-three vehicles we're installing.
Okay.
So they pull out the, they pull out the old camera equipment and install the Axon equipment. There is no training or anything like that. That's part of our subscription.
Okay. And for, and remember, you discussed last time, I mean, from the equipment perspective, it's very intuitive, but we have additional things with the tasers and everything like that that are going to require some training, but that's all covered in the subscription cost.
It comes with ta, includes the tasers and all the activations, and it actually has an Oculus virtual reality trainer, which I was at a conference recently where they, they're really making innovations with that kind of virtual reality training, which is really, I think, the future of police training.
Questions for the chief? I see Commissioner Douglas first.
Yeah, I'm still not clear. The installation will be done by a separate company, and we will subsequently be approving a purcha, a, a purchase order for that?
Yes, it's five hundred dollars per car, so it's just over ten thousand dollars. So that's first, and we don't have that quote available right now, but that's what, that'll come...
But if it's over ten thousand, we'll see it, and if it's under ten thousand, we won't. I think that's our limit right now.
Yes, but you will, because it's going to be over ten thousand. So I would expect that, we are looking, did you get through the holidays? And probably early February, when we would actually get the equipment after we signed the contract, we're going to ask them to... we're going to ask them to kind of expedite that because of the problems we're having with our hard drive. So, you know, I don't know when we'll be ready for that, but soon, probably December, I would think.
Okay, second question. This appears to be a no-bid contract. How is it that we are entering into an arrangement under these circumstances?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. One is no, I have a sole source letter. Nobody is doing what Axon is doing as far as the linking it with their tasers. There are other companies that have in-car video and have a video evidence management system, the software we're looking at, but none of them come close to touching what Axon is doing. The biggest player, which is we currently have, is WatchGuard. You know, we got a quote from, from them, and it just, they're, they're not even, they're not nearly as advanced as where Axon is, and we're much more comfortable with it.
So you set some specifications or some expectations about how you wanted this to operate, and only one company met your specifications.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, you know, it was mentioned at the bu, at the public, the budget session. I've been maybe later to the game to this than probably many of you would have hoped. But for, to get body worn cameras, they have to do what we want and expect them to do. And Axon, with the record after the fact, that they're always recording, so they will capture what we're looking for, the automatic activation, so the officer doesn't have to think about it. Those are some of the things where they make it where I'm comfortable telling my officers, hey, we're going to, we're moving forward going with these, so.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dubb.
Just a couple of things, chief. So, yeah, I understand that this is a company that's doing something no one else is, and that's where we're going with them. It's possible when this contract runs out in five years, you know, we take a look at the market, there's other competitors. So my question is, the data that, that is captured and they're storing for us, the data by contract belongs to us, correct?
Yes.
Is there a legal threshold, a number, amount of time that we have to hang on to that before it's destroyed?
There's a normal record retention, which is thirty days for anything that's not going to be evidence. And so we can set those parameters up, so they automatically, we're going to have it longer than thirty days. I don't know what it's going to be yet, probably at least forty-five, maybe sixty. But, so we don't have to actually do anything. They're just retained. And then once we tag it, if we decide we're going to keep it, it's kept forever. So there's no limit to how long we keep it, so.
And so then say we go with another company, is, is the data migration, is that something that is considered in this contract? I'm sorry? If we go with another company, I assume we don't, we don't leave the data on their servers?
No, we have to, they, they have a, they have a system for that. I'm, maybe Keith knows, I don't. This is where I get into the weeds a little bit, but do you want to, they, they do, that is our property, and they, and we get it from them.
Okay.
It will remain our property, and at the conclusion of any contract with this company, they give us a ninety-day window to provide devices to them, and they give us all of our data back.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. As, as far as anything that was scratching my brain, that was the only thing that I could think of. Everything else seems really tight. Thank you.
Other questions? Lieutenant Spencer, the chief? Okay, we know our chief knows what a hard drive is. Commissioner Douglas.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the topic. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Good luck, good product. Excited to lead the way technologically, so.
For those of you who don't know, this is a really sophisticated suite of technology that is going to, you know, not just empower our police officers, but empower our citizens. And, you know, things are triggered when the cop car goes on. You don't have to worry about turning on a camera, or when you, when an officer has to pull his taser out or her taser out. You know, it triggers certain things, and it has a loop recording. And all of that, at the end of their shift, gets uploaded into the cloud, and they don't have to bring videotapes in and DVDs and, you know. I'm teasing, I'm teasing the chief, but, you know, you can imagine this archaic hard drive that they probably don't even make parts for anymore, trying to keep it on board. So any sort of deep analysis we want to do, it's really a good product. And I think it'll keep our police officers safer, it'll keep our citizens safer, and, you know, will help us, especially when it comes to, you know, persecuting crimes and things of that nature. You know, it's there. And the worst thing that you can have happen is something, an officer doing his or her job, and then, oh, I forgot to turn on my camera. That just looks bad. So this technology really, you know, legitimately, in the heat of the moment, that can happen countless times. So this is really something that's going to enable us to do some pretty modern police work. So we'll see how it goes. Hopefully, it's received well, and we'll give it a try. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. This brings us to the final agenda item, which is a Stormwater Authority ordinance first reading.
Mayor and City Commissioners, this is first reading on a proposed Stormwater Utility Ordinance. We've had several long discussions with the commission about this. Staff has been dedicating a lot of time to this project. We've been working closely with our consultants at, at OHM on the utility and related issues. As we've discussed before, the ordinance would essentially shift the manner in which we calculate and collect the fees that the city has charged for the treatment of the city's stormwater. The stormwater currently is processed by the Water Resources Commissioner, and then in turn by the Great Lakes Water Authority. Charges are passed back to the county and then back to the city. In terms of the stormwater fees, those are currently a component of the city's water and sewer rates. And pursuant to the Schroeder case, we do, the litigation that we had a couple of years ago, we do have the authority to continue to assess those stormwater fees as part of our water and sewer rates. However, what we're recommending is that we pull those treatment fees out of the water and sewer rates, establish, establish a separate utility, which will apportion those costs based upon the amount that a given piece of property actually contributes to the stormwater system. We feel that's more fair, it's more equitable, and in the long run, it's more consistent with the city's goals in terms of environmental responsibility and promoting green infrastructure. The ordinance itself is here tonight on first reading. If the ordinance is approved on first reading tonight, then we'll bring it back for second reading at one of the meetings in December. We will have several other related matters to bring back at that time if it's approved on first reading tonight. In, in the interest of full disclosure, there are a couple of other issues that are hanging out there right now relative to the Water and Sewer Fund. One is the issue of lead in the water and lead supply lines. We're in the process of working with the county, with the state, to develop a plan to replace lead supply lines in the community. And the way the legislation is currently written, that's going to be our responsibility to do that. We're going to have to bear the cost of that. We're not looking at any source of state funding at this point in time. So as we move forward through that, that's going to be a significant expense, and it's probably going to end up having to be passed along to our customers through water and sewer rate increases. The other issue that's hanging out there is we do have a litigation that's pending regarding sewer backups, going back to two thousand and fourteen. And again, depending upon how those matters resolve, those also could have an impact on water and sewer rates. But regardless of those other issues hanging out there, we still feel that this is the fairest way to move forward in terms of the treatment and the apportionment of the city's stormwater treatment costs. And we're recommending approval of the ordinance on first reading tonight.
Questions for Mr. Gillum. Commissioner Perush.
As I read the ordinance, it, it is, it sets up the legal framework for us being able to do a stormwater utility. It delegates responsibility to the city engineer to administer the program. It gives us the legal authority to, to assess fees. It gives us a legal framework in order to do this more, moving forward. But I know a lot of people have questions about credits, and how is my particular fee going to be calculated? And, and who's exempted, if anybody, and all of that. It's my understanding that that comes next, in one of the next steps that comes probably before us when we have this on second reading. It's the Stormwater Management Plan that's identified in the ordinance just as the plan for doing this, as well as the management program, which means aspects of the program, like the credits and the appeals, how you can appeal, how much you are assessed based on your property's configuration, and so on and so forth. So I think it's my understanding, and I think we need to make sure that the public understands, that this is not that aspect of it yet, that that's still in the development process, and it will come as the next step, once we establish just the legal framework for being able to do this going forward. Is, is that correct? Is that how things are going?
That's basically correct, yeah, yeah. In theory, if this is approved tonight on first reading, either at our first meeting in December or the second, although at this point, we're shooting for the first, we would also bring back the Stormwater Plan, which you made reference to, which staff has been developing with the help of our consultants at OHM. In addition to that, we would actually have the fee schedule. That is a recommendation for the City Commission. What we envision, envision with this authority is much is the same as we set our water and sewer rates on an annual basis every year when the commission passes the budget in late spring, early summer. That's the way that we would anticipate handling stormwater utility fees going forward. Obviously, we have to have those fees in place to get us through till the end of this fiscal year. That's the action that would be taken in one of the meetings in December. And then going forward, stormwater fees would be another resolution that we would be asking the City Commission to approve sometime in May, when you approve your budget for the upcoming fiscal year, when you approve all your other budget resolutions. The actual framework for the appeal is set up in the ordinance itself. It provides for an appeals board with membership of three people and things like that. But in terms of, of the nuts and bolts of the credits and how much the credits would be worth, you're correct, that would be in policy documents that would be promulgated by the Engineering Department, subject for, to the approval of the City Commission.
Okay, and then anticipating that that is going to be in front of us in the first meeting in December, are we also developing some kind of communication program so that the people understand why their water and sewer bill is going to be changing and how it's going to be changing? Is that also ongoing, or are we not to that point yet?
No, that's, that's a program we've been working with. Judy Davis has been helping us with that. We have information that we plan to send out through the Insight Magazine. We've got, working on a draft of an insert that's going to go in the next water bill that goes out, along with some other information. So, yeah, that's been part of the whole process, is trying to work on, work on a public outreach program.
Okay, all right, thanks. Those are my only questions so far.
Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Douglas.
So I'm first going to follow up on something Commissioner Perush just said, because maybe the exact amount of the fees or the credits will be determined later, but actually, the credits are listed in here, I was a little bit surprised to see. Credits may be established for one or more of the following, installing and maintaining rain gardens, bioswales, infiltration trenches. So they are in fact listed out already in this ordinance in terms of what would be eligible for credit. And I know we can make changes to that later, but I just wanted to clarify that it's, there are, there, some of it is here already.
Yeah, those, those are examples of the type of things that we would envision credits for. For example, one of the other things we talked about was having a rain barrel. But a rain barrel only works the first time, because once it's full, it doesn't do you any good anymore after that.
Right.
So that wouldn't be something that would be eligible for a credit. But there, there are things that are listed here. There could be other things as well.
Okay, and so, all right, and then that leads back to some of the other questions I had. So one was just about the way that we phrase, the way that we phrase whether or not a property is subject to the fee. It says a property is not subject to the fee unless the city can demonstrate both that the property utilizes the stormwater system and that such utilization imposes a net cost on the stormwater system. I'm just wondering, that seems like a, the, why is the burden, the burden is on us rather than saying, any city that falls, any property that falls within the city limits will be subject to this unless the resident can show that the property does not utilize the stormwater system? I'm just wondering what the thought was.
Part of the reason is, and I, and I'll confess that a large part of the framework that's contained here, I cobbled it from the pending state legislation. The reason for that is because the pending legislation was specifically designed to deal with potential challenges under the bolt standard, which going back to attempts by the, the City of Lansing to establish a stormwater authority a number of years ago. And the appellate courts in Michigan decided that, that that fee was actually a tax, and they struck it down. And as a result of that, there's a three-pronged standard that came out of that case regarding voluntariness and proportionality and regulatory purpose as opposed to a revenue generating purpose. The legislation that is working its way through the process in Lansing, and a lot of the language that's in here, is meant to deal with and head off potential bolt challenges. So in that sense, we're trying to show that the burden is upon the city to establish that a property is subject to the tax as opposed to defaulting, and saying, just because you're in Roiloke, you're subject, I'm not to the tax, to the fee.
Right. So what is the city's means of showing that, that there, it utilizes the stormwater system other than, it's in the city and it has some impervious? Is that just our means of showing?
Basically, and then it's an engineering analysis based upon what's shown by the survey or an approved site plan or something like that, yes.
Okay. And then the other thing, I just, I was wondering about this in section ten. This is reducing or increasing based on modification or improvement. So it says here, a stormwater utility fee shall be reduced for a property if a modification or improvement made to that property reduces the impervious area. And I thought that in the, this makes it sound like, if you do something, no matter how minor, it'll, it will have an impact, although it will be proportionate to the amount of the, of the change. But I thought we had talked, when we were doing our sessions on this, that things were going to be in, what's the word I'm looking for?
Tears?
Yes, thank you, tears. So that you would have to bump it quite a bit to get out of your tear in many cases.
Like a standardized tax deduction.
So, right, so saying that if it shall be reduced, if a modification or improvement is made that reduces the impervious area, I wondered if that wasn't taking into account those tears.
Yeah. What we ended up concluding was that the tears was not the most equitable way to approach the, the issue. So, no, every parcel would be subject to its own calculation of its impervious surface. And then the fee would be based upon the amount that that particular property was, was contributing to the stormwater system. We are, would be factoring in a margin of error, a slight margin of error, so the property owner would get the benefit of the doubt as far as that's concerned, in case our measurements were off slightly. But, no, there are no tears that, that, at this point, that we're looking at in terms of the fee structure, which we're still trying to finalize.
Okay. But does this open us up to, if they have like a stone stepping path, and they pick up a stone, to us recalculate it to the penny based on the fact they now have slightly less impervious area than they did before?
Well, I mean, I suppose if someone wanted to make that minor of a change, which was going to have that little, little of an impact upon the amount that they would pay in terms of a stormwater fee, we'd make the calculation, but I don't know that it would be worth their time, to be honest.
Okay.
I think, Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Dubb.
Yes, somewhat apropos of Commissioner Macy's questions. We've described a process that bases the fee on the amount a property contributes to the stormwater system. But in fact, it's really the amount a property is responsible for, because some of the fee is for the debt to build the drain and for the pipes under the ground?
Let me, let me stop you right there now.
Okay, no.
In terms of debt, for the Coon facility, under state law as it exists right now, we have to assess that on a property tax ad valorem basis. We're working with the Michigan Municipal League to see if the, the drain code can be tweaked slightly that would allow a community like us to pass those capital costs on through utility. But the way it stands right now, we're not able to do that. So we are allowed to include in this fee potential long-term capital improvements to the system and the costs of those kind of things. But in terms of existing debt for the treatment facilities, we're not allowed to include that in this fee.
Okay, so if I have a vacant lot, all grassy, grassy grass, does that mean I don't pay anything?
You'll probably have to pay an administrative fee.
Okay.
But other than that, it would be, it would be minimal at most.
Hold on to your taxes.
Unless you, we find that we are able to include in our fees our estimates for infrastructure, long-term costs. I mean, who's, who's paying for the water that runs off our public streets?
Well, right now, it's our water and sewer customers that are paying for that right now, for the, the cost for treatment of that.
Right.
It's our water and sewer customers.
So who will pay for it after we establish the utility?
Then the owner of the property that's. Then the owner of the property that's generating the stormwater runoff. They're the ones that will be responsible for the payment of the fee, for the treatment of the amount of runoff they're contributing to the system.
So, but what about water that falls on Main Street? Who pays for that?
That's the cost of the system. I mean, that'll be absorbed by the system, it'll be shared equally by all the, all the properties that are contributing stormwater to the, to the collection system.
So theoretically, the pavement on my head of my street is something that I would be paying for, theoretically?
Theoretically, yeah. We're not going to include that in the calculation for your utility fee, but yeah, in theory, yeah, you're paying for most or all of that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubach, and then Commissioner LaVassar, and then Commissioner Macy.
Just, so I'm clear, when we had the work group conversation around this, we were shown some examples of how rates would be impacted, you know, property to property, right? What was the rate that we were using? Was that just current rate, based on the percentage change, based on permeable surface?
You know, in terms of the amount of the actual fee that they use, you know, that's a good, I don't know that, to be honest. So, I mean, what I can tell you is that the information that staff had put together indicated that slightly more than half...
I think what they did is, I think they took that one page in there, I think you just flipped through it, where they had the cost of the new system and how that would be sort of turned into a rate and what that would mean for each individual property. And then they kind of did a statistical analysis that said, okay, today we know what someone, what these properties paid last quarter, and if we were to add in a few little extra costs and bump it up, you know, with the, remember how they had the administration fee and some of the environmental things for green infrastructure in there, and then boom, it popped out. I think that's what I remember.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. I mean, in terms of the amount of the fee, like per parcel or, you know, that I'm not specifically aware of, but the basis for the calculation was the roughly $13 million cost of the stormwater system right now.
And just dividing that up amongst impervial surface.
Correct.
Okay. So I remember the big takeaway, I feel like we talk a lot about comparing my property to my neighbor's property and if I have a patio and they don't, but we're talking about a difference of dollars, you know, maybe dozens of dollars a year, you know, not hundreds of dollars a year from the examples that we were shown for the most part. And where the big change here is, is for large commercial properties, that have a lot of impervial surface, that may not be large water customers, have really not been paying for the massive amounts of runoff that they're generating, and this will bring that much more. Like, that's where the big movements will be, right, for large property owners.
Correct.
Correct. So I feel like we get bogged down in like my patio versus your walkway, but those are minuscule movements in what ratepayers, you know, residential ratepayers are going to experience. But what we're really doing is making sure we're shifting cost into those, the largest producers of runoff. Like, that's going to be the big takeaway here.
The ones that contribute the most should pay the most.
Exactly.
That's the theory.
And that's, and from resident to resident, that's nominal.
Yeah. The one group of residents that will, as we explained before, that will potentially see some kind of a significant increase, and we're still not talking about thousands and thousands of dollars, but a significant increase would be residential customers who only use a small amount of water right now, because they're only paying for a small amount of water. If their property contributes a small round of runoff to the system, then their stormwater utility fee will also be small. But on the other hand, even if they're only been using a small amount of water, but they have a property that has a lot of impervious surface on us, and they're contributing a lot to the system, then they will have to pay a fair share for what they're contributing to the system.
And those property owners would have the greatest opportunity to create more permeable surface, to get a meaningful credit. If it's, if it's a meaningful change in what you're paying, then there's probably a meaningful opportunity for you to reduce what you're paying by creating, installing more permeable surface on your property. So we're creating...
Press pavers, rain gardens, whatever, that's correct.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure we're clear, the headline here isn't really, you know, worrying about nickels and dimes from property to property, that we're creating a more equitable system, that creates a strong incentive for those that are creating large amounts of runoff to install more green infrastructure on their property, whether that's residential or, or commercial.
To reduce the amount they're contributing to the system, yes.
Yes. And I can see that, sorry to interrupt, but I mean, when you're talking about some of the newer, like, commercial developments that come to town, I mean, in retrospect, like your Kroger and some of those developments, this wouldn't be something that the city would have to force. They would have an economic incentive to say, hey, we're going to, you know, do all these creative things to, you know, limit the amount of runoff that we have, because we don't want to, I mean, I mean, they're a business, they don't want to have to, but that's okay. If they're not paying for that, they're not contributing, they shouldn't have to pay. But now there's an economic incentive. In houses, it's important, but, you know, you get these big chunks of land that are impervious, this is where the real opportunity is. Every time someone flips up a parking lot, they have an opportunity to really reduce the amount of water in our system, which means it's better for the environment, it's better for our basements, and, you know, certainly it's much more economical than going out and spending hundreds of millions of dollars and putting big cans underneath our roads to hold water.
Right.
So, sorry, Commissioner Dubach, I stole your thunder there, but I didn't want to lose my thought, it's almost...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the big takeaway isn't property to property, but that where there's large differences, those creating the runoff will be paying a little bit more, but also have the opportunity to take advantage of these credits, so driving us toward being not just a more equitable system, but a greener city. So it should be a win for everybody.
Commissioner LaVassar.
This has the opportunity to be somewhat confusing for a lot of folks, and so I just want to get some things out there so we can help clarify for the folks who may be here tonight or watching at home. I kind of divide up the various costs of water into four parts, all right? And, you know, first you have the water flowing into our houses, and that fee, that charge is not going to be changed by this, if I'm understanding it correct. Is that, is that a fair, fair statement? The water flowing in. I'm going to separate out and say the water flowing out later, so...
Okay, all right.
If that helps.
Okay.
I saw the pause, and I think I was reading your mind there.
Okay. And I think I know where you're going, so I'll, I'll let you continue.
All right. So basically, if you use so much water, you're going to still be paying for that water, for the water coming in, and that's water that we purchase from the Great Lakes Water Authority. All right? And that should not be impacted by what we're doing here today, or what's being proposed here today, if I understand correctly.
And if anything, that amount will be reduced, because we will only, you'll only be paying for the water that comes in, and you will not be paying for the cost of treating what comes out further down the line.
All right, so...
Because currently, we calculated that every gallon you use, it's assuming it's going directly into the sewer system as well, and that's how we're funding it, ergo the lawsuit.
Okay, so separate from that, we have a charge for the water going out, and that's for the treatment of the water. We have the water we purchased for use, it's for consumption, then we have to pay for treatment. That's basically broken into two parts. There's the water that comes into our house and then leaves, and then there's the water runoff from rainfall that goes into the same system and also needs to be treated. Is that a fair way to break it up?
That's accurate, yeah.
All right, so essentially, if I'm understanding this correctly, on our water bill, we would still have a charge for treating the water that we consume through our households, in our households. But right now, we're also being charged for the treatment of the rainwater, based upon that water consumption in our household.
Based upon water coming in, not upon the runoff, that's correct.
All right, and so the expectation is, when fees are set, and we're not doing that tonight, I anticipate we're going to be doing that next month.
Correct.
When fees are set, presumably, we would be adjusting the charges on the water bill for that water that comes in, to reflect this revenue coming in through this source. Is that a fair, fair thing to say?
Yes, yeah. The water rates will reduce by virtue of the fact we're backing out the stormwater fee costs.
And that's treatment, this is essentially about the cost of treatment, it's not about the cost of delivery of that water to the treatment centers, that's the drains, that's a separate fee. We borrowed money through the sale of bonds as part of a greater community to pay for that. That's not going to change, that's still going to be paid for with millage funds, if I'm understanding correctly. 1.085 mils is what the current rate is, if I'm understanding correctly. So that's not changing, that's not going away, at least as things stand right now under state law.
Yeah. And that money goes to pay for the treatment facilities, not necessarily for the sewer lines that gets the runoff there, but that's for the county facilities, for example, the Coon facility.
The bonds pay for that as well?
That's correct.
All right. So the infrastructure pays for the infrastructure to get it to there and have the infrastructure to treat.
Well, the infrastructure, our infrastructure would be paid for through the stormwater fee. But it's the capital costs for the treatment facilities, which are run by other government entities, excuse me, those are paid for with the ad valorem property taxes.
Okay. All right, I want to make sure I understand what you mean by our infrastructure, what you're anticipating here.
The water runs down your driveway and into the, through the drain, through the grate at the foot of your driveway into the sewer, and then it goes down that sewer to...
So that, those sewer lines that are within our city limits, that essentially lead to the, to the main drains, that's what we're paying for with this?
Correct.
All right, okay. All right, and again, we're not, we're not setting fees tonight.
Correct.
Something to anticipate next month, perhaps?
Yeah.
All right. And we would expect that there would be some corresponding set off, reducing what people are currently paying on the water bill, once this is adopted.
Yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be a dollar-for-dollar set off, but there should be a reduction in water and sewer rates, reflecting the fact that there would be a separate stormwater utility fee, yes.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, and just so people know, there's been some discussion of how much money we currently need for treatment of, of water versus what this would generate, and I think we're going to have some further discussion about that next month, and I may have some concerns about that. But this particular program, I can support tonight. I've had my concerns with it, the city spent about quarter million dollars obtaining information to put this in place. I don't know that that was the best use of those funds, but it's, it's funds that are already gone at this point, and we've obtained information with those funds, so I'm, I'm going to support this tonight for that reason.
Anybody else? Commissioner Perusch?
We discussed a couple of meetings ago, some amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow for permeable driveways and so on. Are there any other changes either to the zoning ordinance or to any other ordinances that we need to tackle in order to allow more opportunities for people to develop like rain gardens or any other structural changes onto their property so that they can get additional credits? Or do we think everything that we have in place now is okay, is sufficient?
I'm not aware of any other amendments, particularly to the zoning ordinance. I think the permeable pavers was the biggest issue from our standpoint, but I'm sure the staff will let me know if there are things that need to be done that I'm not aware of.
We still have the wiggle room left in there, I believe, in the ordinance that says, you know, we can do experiments, so if there's something that's not listed in there, a new technology we're unaware of, I believe that's still in there at the city engineer's discretion to allow a property owner to attempt to use a new stormwater management retention, retention system, if I'm not mistaken.
And really, what's, in terms of what's eligible for credits and things like that, what we're proposing is those are things that would be developed by way of policy, more than by ordinance.
Okay.
So if those needed to be changed, now, the policy is going to be subject to commission approval, but if there were things that needed to be added or things that turned out didn't belong in there, it would be something that could be changed quickly, because we'd have to bring it to the commission to amend the policy. We wouldn't have to worry about two readings of an ordinance and then...
Right.
Ten days after that for publication and things like that, so...
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head, this really establishes the framework legally for what we intend to do, but in terms of some of the policy documents and other things, those are going to, going to provide a lot of the specifics. And those are things that we would bring back to you, again, hopefully next month. Because what we're envisioning is that the utility will take effect as of January 1, and then we would be issuing the first set of bills for a stormwater utility fee to our residents, probably in April.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. I'll just add, you know, this has been a journey. You know, clearly, to even simplify it further, water wants to go into the ground, and we've built this amazing city over almost a century now, since 1921. We're almost on our 100-year anniversary. And stormwater is, always had to be managed since humans started building villages and towns and impervious pavement. And there's a cost to managing that water. And those costs historically have been taking it away from the city and pumping it out to the lake. Eventually, as we became more environmentally conscious, it became cleaning that water and saying, okay, we have to treat it. And now that we're starting to see crazy weather patterns like we did back in 2014, the extremely wet spring that we saw this year, we'll continue to see these more intense storms. There's an additional cost here with stormwater management, and, you know, promoting and looking at every avenue, not just to bill it more fairly, but to promote easy, quick wins with green infrastructure is critical to all of us who, you know, reside here. Like I said, it's a better environmental policy, it certainly is going to be fair, but it's also going to keep water out of our basements through incentives over the next number of decades. So this is good policy, and it's going to be shaped over time, and, you know, we're going to continue to treat it like a living, breathing creature, but we're going to be better off next year than we are this year, and 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, hopefully we're in a really strong position and a leader when it comes to stormwater management. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the end of our agenda. Notwithstanding anything else for the betterment of our great city, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Commissioner Gibbs.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gibbs, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Before you bang the gavel, I just...
That was my knuckles, it was not the gavel, so we haven't technically ended the meeting.
No, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all the work that Melanie Hallis and her staff and all the election workers did at our election office last Tuesday night. I think people who don't earn around the clerk's office around the time of an election seem to think that it just happens real quickly and it happens by itself, but it doesn't. I mean, there are months and months and months of preparation, and we're fortunate to have a clerk that's very well informed and is very on top of issues. And again, we had an election procedure that ran almost seamlessly here in Royal Oak, and I think that's a direct credit to Melanie, so...
First year, too, with no reason absent in voting. And sometimes it's hard to tell, because she's always smiling, she always has the answer. And I think sometimes we take that for granted, how much she stresses and gets through everything, and, I mean, your record is exceptional with pulling off flawless elections, so you're here to Melanie. One more round for Melanie and the whole clerk's office, and all the poll workers. And she has to take meeting minutes of me talking, which could probably be equally challenging, so I don't know.
She stopped, the meeting's over, and she stops. So that means she's stopped on you, too.
All right, now, my knuckles are up off the table.